I'd like to call the Monday, March 9th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording it. Seeing none, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And under public comment, Mr. Simonian would like to say something about the Auburn High team.
Just a quick one, as we've done in the past, we had another team that has contributed to the Auburn success. Our Auburn High School cheerleaders yesterday participated in the state finals for cheerleading. Unfortunately, they did not do well enough to get invited to the national championships, but it was quite a run. And I gotta tell you, up until the last year or so, I never realized how hard these girls were. Take some time, and they sustain injuries that are worse than some kids who play football. It's hard work. I can't tell you what a great job they did. They went up against some tough competition yesterday at Watch U.C. and did a fantastic job. So just another one of our groups here in Auburn that at least had an opportunity to shoot for a state championship. So congrats to them.
Absolutely, and you know, I'm so pleased that cheerleading is now absolutely designated a sport, as it should be.
Yeah.
And just to follow up on that, the Auburn High School, We the People, are the state team, are their state champions again. They will be representing us at the national championship in Washington. And please, just watch the media for additional information. There'll be some events that they'll be having leading up to their trip in Washington to represent us for the second consecutive year.
It's the same group that came up here last year, right?
Yep. And they're champs again this year. So the first item we have is a change of manager. Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar at 680 Southbridge Street is the applicant here. If you could come up to the microphone, please, give your name for the record and just tell us a little bit about why you're here tonight.
My name's Michael Spotts. Came in in order to take over for Michael Zaba, who was the general manager of Applebee's before. I've been in the business for a very long time. I've 36 years, starting as a dishwasher when I was 14, went to college for it. Found a real, for three years, I was at 99's recently, I was down there. Left there in order to go with Applebee's because I believe in what they're doing and the way that we're growing. And luckily enough, I was able to locate a position here in Auburn, which is close to my home, as opposed to Milford, Mass., where I was commuting to. So, you know, and to come down here and hopefully be able to take care of the change of manager would be great and move forward.
Great. Let me just see if any members have any questions. And I apologize, I should have made you aware, it's pretty obvious. The board is generally a five-member board. We have three members who are here tonight to vote on the issue. You would need all three in the affirmative.
Yes.
But generally, I just wanted to put on the record, generally, you know, a change of manager isn't, you know, a real issue because you've come before us and you have the completed application. Do members have any questions?
No.
Any comments? So I assume that you're absolutely familiar with the tip certification and the regulations regarding tip certification?
Absolutely. We have a, we go through Nations, National Restaurant Association. It's actually more intense of a training than the tip certification. Plus, the one thing that I was really happy about is I took over on December 29th since all, moving all the paperwork around here. And we were one of the successful that passed the sting, I guess you want to say.
Alcohol compliance check, we like to call it.
Yeah, exactly. In the industry, we call it the sting, sorry. And we were one of three that, there was three, two restaurants on the street that did not pass and that we did pass.
I don't know if we can. So you know, as manager, you're responsible for the license and license and all the service under you.
Yes, I do.
So, you know, I assume you'll have, you know...
We have regular meetings on it.
Regular meetings.
Yeah, we do. We have what we call neighborhood experts, who are also extensions of our management crews that we also have. I put in about 60 hours a week as it is. And then there are also extensions of ourselves in compliance.
Okay, great. Just one second, please. Can we ask about this?
I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the whole question. Did you ask him if he knew about the conditions on the license?
No, but feel free to go ahead and do that.
To follow up on that question, that you're responsible for the license, we have the Development Coordinating Group, DCG, that all licensed applicants have to go before. And there's usually conditions on licenses and such, so I just want to make sure that since you're taking over, you're familiar with any possible conditions that might be on the license because as Dorian said, once you assume the role, if it's approved...
Right.
You're responsible for the license, any conditions and anything?
Unless there's other stipulations, general conditions, I am completely aware of.
Okay. Hey, that should be, if it came from the DCG, that should be any of the conditions around the license.
Excuse my one moment. So this is attached to our thing, and if you feel, because it's a public document, you want to ask any questions, you can. But I think it's pretty clear.
I'm good.
Okay. Ready? Is there any public comment? Is there a motion regarding the application?
Does this consider the hearing?
No.
Well, no, it just says.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So we should have opened the hearing? The next one isn't the hearing. So is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a motion to, all those in favor were opening the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion to include all the testimony that we just heard prior to opening the hearing in the hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion regarding the application?
I make a motion that we approve the change of manager.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Good luck in your new position.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Come on down, by the way.
All the stuff you were telling me before, I hope it gets a little easier.
It always does.
Can hope.
You can always hope. We've been looking for that every...
Good luck.
Thank you for coming in. The next item we have is a request to extend hours of sales and service of alcoholic beverages. AMF Bowling Centers, Inc., doing business as AMF Auburn Lanes at 101 Southbridge Street is the applicant here?
Yes.
If you could come up to the microphone, please. So just before we begin, I also want to make you aware, as you can see, there are only three members of the board here, two are absent. So in order for a motion to pass tonight, you would need a vote of all three members. Do you want to move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Could you give your name for the record and just tell us a little bit about why you're here tonight?
Robert Calafano, I'm the district manager.
Eric Mahoney, I'm the general manager of AMF Auburn Lanes.
So first off, I just, we wanted to...
Excuse me one second. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? The hearing is open now that you want to move forward.
First off, we just wanted to thank the board and Chief Slukis, sir. Five years ago, giving us the opportunity with a beer and wine license. It has tremendously turned the business around, and we can't thank you enough for that. Last year, we came before you for an all-alcohol license to take it to the next level. And again, we just wanted to say thank you. That has even increased our business even more. We're getting a lot more traffic coming through the doors, a lot of new customers, new faces. So that brings us to the last piece of the puzzle, which is why we're here tonight. Currently, we stop serving at 11:00 PM, so we're asking for the extension. When we make last call at 10:30, some of the guests are a little bit shocked and turned off because it's unexpected. So we felt that it's time, you know, we've been following our procedures and our protocol to a T, and we've had no issues. And we just think it's time to get in line with, you know, the other establishments in the area and, you know, back that up for a couple hours to help us out.
Great. Do members have questions? Mr. Cappenter.
On Sundays, are you looking to be open till 1:00 as well?
No.
Okay.
Sundays, we currently close at 10:00. We wouldn't be moving that.
Anything else? Well, I just, I have a couple comments that I want to share, just positive comments. Your business is a little unique. It's not the standard restaurant or bar where, you know, people go in and order alcohol. It's a, I think of a family business and a full-rounded business, but it's bowling. So I was curious as to why the interest in extending it to 1:00 AM. So I actually visited your place Saturday evening late. I wanted to see what the operation was late in the evening. So visited about 10:30 PM. And I have to say, I was completely impressed with the entire operation, specifically the sales of alcohol. I have my little band here that I noticed many, many people wearing, that they were, you know, check their ID. And everyone's given these bands, and because it is dark, these are fluorescent, so they light up. There was no sense of it being just a place to hang around and drink. People, it was really a social thing. You saw people having a beer, but it wasn't about the beer, it was about the fun atmosphere of bowling and pool and games and whatever. I watched carefully, I walked from one end to the other. I saw your waitresses monitoring. I was there when they called last call. So I just have to say for, you know, as a member of the licensing authority, I was very, very impressed with the monitoring of the alcohol sales.
Thank you very much.
Very impressed, so you have my full support on this. And I absolutely understand why you're looking to stay till 1:00 AM because at 10:30, I still heard people calling so-and-so, "Your lane is ready." So there are people waiting to bowl at 10:30, so they may now come in at 11:30 rather than waiting for a lane. So congratulations on a wonderful operation.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Is there any public comment? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? So voted. Is there a motion regarding the application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the change of hours. You're looking from Monday through Saturday till 1:00, is that correct?
I think they requested the whole week, as a whole.
Well, that's why I asked on Sunday if you wanted it till 1:00.
Yeah, I think when they put the request in, we don't plan to change our closing time on Sunday.
And your closing time is?
10:00.
10:00, yeah.
Mr. Cappenter, you can, you can make your motion to include their closing time at 10:00, and then you would have to come before us again if you look to do that, if that's what you're comfortable with.
Yeah, well, you don't intend to change your hours, but you want the flexibility till 1:00, is that it?
Yeah, I believe that's the intention.
Any of your other locations open after 10:00?
On Sunday?
State.
On Sunday, there's a few, I think, believe at 11:00. Nobody later than that on a Sunday.
I would happily make a motion Monday through Saturday till 1:00. And the AM, Sundays to remain as is unless your hours change.
That's, that's fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
The next item is communications. We have a report from the planning board. The first one is a zoning bylaw proposed amendment to include associate members on the zoning board of appeals. I can read it or... So currently, there is no provision for associate members at town meeting. We would be moving forward to add 9.1.3. In addition to members established by the town charter, the board of appeals may include two associate members appointed by the board of selectmen, one or both of whom may be designated from time to time by the chairman of the board of appeals to sit on the board in case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on a part of any member thereof, or in the event of a vacancy on the board until said vacancy is filled. And it says 9.1.4. The term of each associate member shall be determined by the board of selectmen.
This is an article on the warrant that you're holding on to.
Right. So this is, this is going on to the warrant, where we may or may not take votes tonight, or we may hold it until prior to town meeting. The next is the alteration layout for West Street.
We're not, we're not voting on this?
When we get to the warrant. So that's a communication, that's a recommended language. And then further on is under board of selectmen, are the, is the warrant. So this is just under communications, see, West Street layout. Is there, are there any questions or comments? And next, we have the, approve the votes and the signing of the notes for Southhold Road 61A land and borrowing. So the board has voted to award the $2.865 million Town of Auburn, Massachusetts Bond Anticipation Notes land acquisition loan dated March 17th, 2015, and maturing September 15th, 2015, to Century subsidiary investments at the new net interest rate of .45%. So do we just need to sign these in public?
Yes.
Mr. Kasnovich?
Yes, I think the board would need to take a vote authorizing the sale of these notes. With the signing of the notes that the treasurer has and will be witnessed by the assistant town treasurer, Ms. Green.
Okay, so...
Town clerk, I'm sorry. Assistant town clerk.
Do members have any questions on this? These are the documents on the 61A land, so is there a motion?
Do we need specific language?
Do we need specific language, or just a...
It's this.
It's what I just... You don't have this one?
I don't see it either.
Okay.
It's under Friday.
I'll make a motion that we vote to award the $2.865 million Town of Auburn, Massachusetts Bond Anticipation Notes land acquisition loan dated March 17th, 2015, and maturing September 15th, 2015, to Century subsidiary investments, three, at a net interest rate of .45%.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. So we'll have to just take a minute here to sign these during the meeting.
You have a 5B and a 5B.
Hello? Didn't see one, or they could have lost.
Okay, sign here.
Just that one, but...
Oh, actually, no, there, there's mine.
Is that it on this one, or should I flip?
Like I said, I may have misplaced it.
Mine's still yours, and...
How many do you use, do you have to sign?
A bunch. Lots. Top line.
Just that one? That one? Oh, okay.
But I suppose they have to be original.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna wait to take the session for the articles.
Yeah.
They're not gonna go into the packet anyway. Positions, because they have to be mailed out tomorrow morning. All set?
Yes.
Great. So next, we have the March 24th special town meeting warrant. One vote we would have to take is just to approve the warrant. This isn't taking positions, it's just approving the warrant. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the warrant as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or voted? So now, the board generally takes positions on the warrant articles. We only have three members. Any action we were to take tonight wouldn't make it to the town meeting member packets anyway, so does the board wish to hold to the meeting prior to town meeting?
Yeah, that way, all five of us will be there to...
Okay, so is there a motion to take, schedule a meeting prior to town meeting?
Motion to schedule the selectmen meeting prior to town meeting on March 24th, 2015, at, do we have to give the time, 6:30?
Six, yeah. Or you could do it on the 23rd, and then regular meeting the day before.
Oh, we could just, that's fine. We could do it tonight.
We'll hold the position to the 24th then, okay. So we've just voted to approve the warrant, so we need to sign it tonight.
We'll go on the 23rd then.
So if there's, if there's no interest or need to go over the warrant tonight, we can hold it to the next meeting?
That's fine.
And we'll take positions at that time? The next item we have is the annual town meeting, May 5th, 2015. Is there a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant?
Motion to open the warrant for the annual town meeting on May 5th, 2015. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So next, we would need a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant on Monday, March 23rd, 2015, at 4:00 PM.
Motion to close the annual town meeting warrant on Monday, March 23rd, 2015, at 4:00 PM.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Mr. Cappenter?
Just a question. Boards have been notified of the closing well prior to, and it's only two weeks for them to... Yeah, I don't know if they have anything or they don't, but...
Well, we just voted to open it tonight, so we'll, we'll...
Notify them immediately, first thing tomorrow morning.
First thing tomorrow morning, they'll all be notified that we opened the warrant. Mr. Simonian?
When after the warrant closes, does it get sent out to town meeting members?
Through the, under the, through the town bylaws, it has to be mailed two weeks prior to the town meeting. So it would be two Tuesdays prior to...
The annual's one week special.
Oh, I'm sorry, one week. The special is two weeks, which we're having in March 24th, so tomorrow, we have to mail for the special town meeting. But I stand corrected, on the annual meeting, it's one week prior.
I'm just, I ask because I consistently, it's one of the things I consistently hear from town meeting members, that they don't feel they get the warrant enough time to actually research all of the items, especially at the annual town meetings. Sometimes we've had close to 40 items, and if we mail it out a week before, the best-case scenario is they're, you know, probably getting it three or four days, maybe five prior to. And I'm just speaking, you know, on behalf, it's a constant thing that I hear. So I just thought I'd bring it up here, since so many people have mentioned it to me over the last couple of town meetings. And I don't know if we can do something, but I just wanted to at least bring it up and try to get, you know, get it out to folks, give them enough time, more than a couple of days, so...
Through the chair, we can certainly work to do that. As far as one proposal could be to change the bylaw, so that it's also gets sent out two weeks. But generally, the reason being is we have to coordinate all the different votes, so you have to get your vote, and it has to go to the finance committee. Then the printing does take a while, so we need a little heads-up on the printing. But we can certainly try to get it out faster.
Even, even if we can figure out a way to just bump that by a couple of days, and if, I think if people have at least five days to, you know, like I said, sometimes I know we've had close to 40 articles and, you know, it's, people have a lot of stuff going on, and just, it's important stuff, so I, you know, give them a couple extra days, I think that would be fine if we can do that.
Through the chair, if we can do it, we absolutely...
All right, thank you.
Even if we can give them 10 days, because the budget is such a mammoth, you know, for special town meeting, we're adjusting the budget typically, but for the annual, they really have the monster of a budget to go through in order to develop questions.
Good point.
So even if, you know, if we can't do it two weeks, maybe we can get it to them and say, we can mail out 10 days ahead of time, so they'd have, you know, eight or nine days to look at it and ask questions.
So showing that was discussion under that, we haven't taken a vote on closing, have we?
Um, no.
Okay, so is there, all those in...
We have a, we have a fifth Monday. Could we push this to March 30th, just to give the boards another week?
Push?
Push the closing to March 30th or 4:00?
Yeah, through the chair, we could do it. We've been on the same schedule for several years, so we've already, we do have it mapped out, but it doesn't mean we can't change it moving forward. We can take a look at it. What we have to make sure that we coordinate is the review of this warrant with the town clerk, the town moderator, and town council. So that's where it becomes a little bit of a crunch, because that has to be reviewed by them prior to it being printed and mailed. Right, and the finance committee also has to, so...
It's a week.
Let me just look and see if I back up, let me look at a calendar for a second, if I can, and just make sure we're not going to miss any deadlines. All right, so right now... They're done by then, right? They have to be done by then?
No, they're not going to be done, I think they would have done here.
So does that work for them? Then it has to go with a print, which will be one, two weeks. There's town meetings, so it has to go up by the 21st.
We have to make recommendations based upon those submitted, how that's going to fit into the budget. That doesn't give us much time. Through the chair, here's the dilemma by extending it a week. Those warrant articles may come in on that final day. That being the case, we have to make sure that all the pieces of puzzles, they fit, because there may be some requests from additional funding and where that money is going to come from, and what impact that's going to have on the general fund operating I think it really puts a tight timeline on, on the process. And then, the finance committee is going to have to act on those requests, and I know there's a conflict on the 8th where they may not be able to meet, so the 15th may be the last time they meet on there. So that really puts a lot of pressure on the finance committee to wrap up what they need to do on the operational side of the budget, as well as any considerations on those outside articles and how that may impact their recommendation on six weeks of work that they've undergone already. on six weeks of work that they have undergone already.
So the motion is to close the town meeting warrant on March 23, and I'll support that. I think, based on a conversation that we just had, I'd rather close the warrant on March 23. And if there's time available at the end prior to town meeting, it would be beneficial to get the packets out to town meeting members earlier, so...
Madam Chair, one other comment. I don't see that being a problem looking ahead. We can start the process earlier and open up the warrant earlier. That would allow for some additional time. But I think, given where we are right now, that really puts a squeeze on a number of committees.
And I'm appreciative of that. However, we do have other committees, and this is the annual town meeting, where they actually can put things on. So I think I will support it this time. I did mention it the last time as well. I think we need to realize that we have multiple committees. And while I understand that we have budget articles, every committee is important, and every committee should be given an opportunity well in advance of annual as well as well in advance of a special so that they can bring items that are important to them and might have bearing on the town. So I will happily support it this time, but next time, I will not support it because I feel that we're favoring certain committees over the vast majority of committees.
Is there anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you. Next item, we have a gift acceptance. We have to the fire department gift account. We have $40 from Charlotte Sabagonis and $50 from Joan Badgley. Is there a motion?
Do we need to separate, Madam Chair?
Not if they're both to the fire department gift account.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed or voted? Next items we have, we have no proclamations. We have the town manager item. Mr. Simonian?
I'm sorry, before we go to these, the information that we received on the warrant articles, is that, is that something we were going to discuss tonight?
Well, it's part of the articles, so we're going to hold off, unless you want to discuss something?
No, I just have one comment then. Because the one that requests a bylaw change for things, for something like this, I see the language of what they want to change it to. I would just ask that if someone's going to propose something like this, if they could either, if there's language that it's modifying to include the original one?
Well, at one of our meetings, we had discussion that there was no provision for the appointment of alternates and that per mass general law, we needed to adopt a bylaw. So we did have, so there is no-
Okay, I remember that now.
Yeah. Yeah, there was no previous.
All right.
We actually have had alternates, that we did not have a provision for alternate. So this is, this is...
So the associate members will be the same as an alternate? It's...
It's just standard language throughout the state. Instead of alternate, they're called associates.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah, so there was no previous.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Next item, we have a town manager items, and we have the library grant.
Yes, through the chair, the library director has indicated that she has an opportunity to apply for a grant for 2015 Young Adult Library Service Association grant in the amount of $1,000 to add additional programming to the library. And we're just looking for permission to apply for these funds.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Can I make a motion that we vote to authorize and accept the fund?
Second.
Any discussion? All those, oh, go ahead.
Not even, well, I guess I could hold it, but we're talking about the library. So I just, because I failed to mention this at our last meeting. And just for anyone who hasn't, I know we've had the library director here, and she spoke to a lot of the things that she's changed. And it's been two or three weeks now, I think, since I held office hours at the library a few Saturdays ago. And I do apologize for failing to mention it because it slipped my mind, and it shouldn't have. For anyone who hasn't been down there, they really have done a nice job. I can't believe how much different it looks. And shame on me for not getting down there sooner because I have a library card. But, you know, like everyone else, I tend to rely on the Internet way too much for my information these days. So, no offense. But yeah, check it out. It looks great. So anyway, sorry I didn't mention it sooner.
Great. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or voted? Do you have anything else?
I do. If I could add just a notice. We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting just... But we did send an email out today to all the board and commission members, actually Friday, it went out, that we are going to be holding an ALICE training, the A-L-I-C-E training, for all board and commission members here on March 26 at 7:00 p.m. And it's being put on by Sergeant Ken Charlton and Fire Chief Steve Coleman. We mentioned before that this, its active shooter training class had been held for the town employees in town hall, and now we're bringing this to the boards and commissions on that date. So hopefully, we can get a good turnout for board and commission members. We're also opening up to any new employees that were not here for the training that was initially held in November. So again, it's March 26 at 7:00 p.m. here in the BOS room. We will make sure that we post it and announce it appropriately, but I wanted just to take the chance to let people know in advance.
Great. Just that they're looking for our RCTs.
Yes. We would appreciate an RCT because it will help us set up the room appropriately for the exercise.
Do you have anything else?
I don't know.
Okay. There are no tabled items. No board of selectmen items that were submitted? Is there any additional public comment? We have the minutes of October 14, 2014. Are there any corrections or omissions? If not, the chair will accept them as written. And do you have information regarding the need for executive session?
Through the chair, we can hold off on that. We put it on the agenda tonight in advance, hoping that we would be able to get a full complement of the board since we can't. It's nothing that's too time-sensitive. We spoke to Demaskus, the labor counsel, who said that we can certainly wait and have this at the end of March or middle of April, and it will be fine.
So there's no need for executive session? Is there a motion?
Motion overturned.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.